Uh, and let's start again by going through all the members and saying that you're alone. Dennis, are you alone in your office?
I'm alone.
Uh, Simon?
I'm alone.
Steven?
I'm alone.
Charlie?
I'm alone.
And I'm alone too. Uh, shall we do a pledge of allegiance?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Is everyone ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America.
And to God.
For all. I think we're getting worse.
No, I thought that was kind of neat, actually.
Okay. Uh, once again, gentlemen, have you read the minutes to the last meeting?
Yeah.
Yes.
Does anybody have any questions or comments about it? Please?
No.
Simon, would you vote yes on accepting the minutes?
I'll accept the minutes.
Uh, Charlie?
Yes.
Steven?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yep.
And I do too, so the minutes are accepted. Uh, I think, uh, Bailey Brook Forest Management is first. Is anyone here to speak about that?
Dan Lawrence.
Oh, this is Dan Lawrence. I'm here, I'm here to speak about Bailey Brook.
I'm sorry?
Sorry, I missed the last meeting.
Which meeting?
Uh, last month I was supposed to be here, but I kind of spaced on it and...
Well, just give us a brief rundown of what you want to do for the record.
Sure. Yep, it's, um, an 80-acre timber harvest on, uh, New York City watershed land. Uh, it has one, it's required to have a wetlands permit and an erosion control permit. And, um, yeah, that's about, that's about it. Um, it's a crown thinning for the most part, with a couple small patch openings throughout the area to try and get some, uh, early successional forest to come back.
Very good. Uh, consultants, you have comments here?
You have to open the public hearing, so I don't know if you want...
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Uh, can I get a motion to open the pu- to reopen the public hearing?
This is Steven Wilholland, make the motion.
And a second?
I'll second, Simon Carey.
And Simon, how do you vote?
Aye.
Steven?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
And I vote aye too. Meeting is opened. Consultants?
Um...
Who wants to start?
Oh, um, I guess, uh, Phil, it's Bruce. Good evening, Dan. Um, Dan and I met at the site. We had a look at the wetlands area in question. Um, it's a, an area with a crossover pipe that needs a little stabilization. It's one of the access roads for the harvest and, uh, the DEP is putting down a stabilized base, uh, just on the off-chance that during the actual logging operation, they would get some rain and some rutting and would get maybe some material into the wetlands or buffer. So it's out of a extreme precaution, they're putting this base down. Um, that actually trips the need for the wetland permit. Dan and I discussed it. Um, and it's, uh, it looks to be, um, it looks to be well conceived. And it's, this is again, a thinning, um, operation on a DEP property, um, about 80 acres and o- over, just to the northwest, I guess, of Boyd's Reservoir.
Thank you, Bruce. Julie, do you have, uh, additional comments?
I do, I do. Um, they submitted, uh, the letter in lieu of the erosion control bond. So I, I had attached it to my memo. So I reviewed it in comparison to the previous project on Horse Pound Ridge and to the one before that, the Seven Hills Lake Dam repair. And it seems to have met all of the, you know, the previous comment, the planning board and the planning board's attorney have had. So, um, with that, we're going to recommend, like, you know, accepting the letter and move the bond and forwarding it to the town board. Also, they had requested a, um, a waiver request to do GIS maps rather than, um, survey maps and to not have to show the, uh, the dimensions of the property lines. So again, we have no objection to this, uh, waiver request. This is similar to what was done for the previous DEP for Horse Pound Ridge. So those are the, the, the two items is the, the letter and move the bond and the, the waiver for the GIS map. And then as far as I'm concerned, I think the public hearing is ready to be closed.
All right, thank you, Julie. Liz, do you have something to add?
Nope, not on this one. Thanks.
Gentlemen, do you have any questions for anybody? Can I get a motion from someone to accept the letter rather than the bond? And also, help me here, Julie, with GIS?
Yeah, the, the waiver request by GIS maps instead of...
Can I get that motion?
I'll make the motion.
And a second?
I'll second it.
Uh, Steven, how do you vote?
Would I?
Charlie?
Aye.
Simon?
Aye.
Uh, Dennis?
Aye.
And I vote aye too. And now can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
And a second. And Simon, how do you vote?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
Steven?
Aye.
Uh, Dennis?
Aye.
And I vote aye too. Are we good on that, uh?
The only thing remaining...
Do you have any more questions for us?
Phil, the only thing remaining, the board may wish that any of the small amendments left would be handled administratively.
Do we need to vote on that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, can I get a motion to pass this to administrative track?
I'll make that motion.
And a second.
Second.
And Dennis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Simon?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
Steven?
Aye.
And I vote aye also.
All right, thanks, Dan.
All right, um, Fragosi Marinelli. Is anyone here representing Fragosi or Marinelli?
Phil, they're not, and they want to be taken off of the agenda till further notice, really.
Sounds good to me.
Vera, Vera, did we get anything in writing from them to that effect? Either email or something?
No, I asked him for it, but I talked to him today. He said he hasn't sent it, but he will. Is this a withdrawal?
No, no.
No.
A public hearing was opened, had expected to have a recent mail from their engineer. We had scheduled the public hearing, but they haven't received, you know, the engineer hasn't done the middle yet. So we've just been carrying the public hearing open, you know, adjourning it every month. So I don't know if the public hearing can be closed and then reopened at a later time or if it needs to be, you know, like, scheduled for three months from now or how, how does that get handled, Liz?
I think if you close it, then you would have to re-notify. I, you know what, maybe just adjourn it again, because he seems to think he'll get the dr- the got, Roy Fredrickson told them they give them to him this week. So hopefully he'll have it next week. So maybe just adjourn it again till September.
Okay. Yeah, because I think you're right, Liz. I think it'd have to be re-notified if that was the case. He probably doesn't know. Okay. So that just needs to be adjourned again, Mr. Chairman.
Right. Can I get a motion to adjourn this public hearing until September?
I'll make that motion.
And a second.
Second.
And Steven, how do you vote?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
Simon?
Aye.
And I vote aye too. Vitello, is there anyone here to represent Vitello?
Good evening, members of the board. I am Eric Shulom of Insight Engineering here tonight, uh, representing the Vitello residents. Uh, if I try to share my screen, uh, if that's possible, so I can, uh, give a, a description of the plans.
Please.
Getting message that the host is disabled sharing. That, a permission that needs to be shared, so I can, uh, share my screen.
I think we, I think, Chairman, you do want to allow sharing of the screen, so the...
Absolutely. Who's got control?
Paul there? Uh, hang on, is there a way to request screen sharing?
I'm hitting share screen and says host disabled participant screen sharing.
Oh, yeah, I saw the same thing. Which, um, Paul, are you still there? Is it Paul tonight? Yeah, let me call him. I'll call him.
I don't...
Hang on a second here. I see Town of Kent host.
Did you see that?
Hang on a second here.
Okay, hold on.
I'm just sending him a message.
We'll have that up for you in just a second.
Okay, thank you. Hey, you guys, um, Paul's fixing that.
Okay. Where'd I go? Liz, if you want to go ahead and try that now?
Okay.
Been disappeared.
It's allowing me to, uh, share and just got to select the right...
Yay!
You can claim that?
Yeah.
All right, so again, uh, you're here for a Vitello residence. Uh, it's an existing, uh, two-story on, at, uh, 475 Pudding Street. Uh, if you look at, uh, the location map, we have 301 down here, Peak Scale Hollow Road, uh, Richard Road across the top here and then Pudding Street, uh, and here is this site. Now, uh, this is the overall property, uh, thirty, say thirty-two acre parcel, uh, in total. Uh, the Vitello is also on, uh, the parcel to the south. Uh, and as well to the east, uh, a total of one hundred and two acres between the three parcels. Uh, as I zoom in on, again, uh, there's the existing driveway off of Pudding Street, uh, comes up to the, to the main residence. The, the existing residence, uh, is in this light gray that I'm circling with the mouse. Uh, there's also a, a driveway to, uh, more, uh, shed, uh, an existing shit, thing, tennis court, that is cool. The, uh, it's proposed to, uh, add a two-bedroom, uh, addition onto the house. There's a darker, uh, area here that I'm circling with the mouse. And then there'd also be, uh, a proposed garage, uh, which would access, uh, from the driveway and then a, uh, second level, uh, with a walkout to the, to the back of the, that would be a three-bedroom, uh, apartment on the second story, uh, of the garage. So if I can, um, so, and this shows some of the, uh, the existing conditions, uh, without the proposed improvements on it. The, uh, the existing driveway, you're here, where it's grayed out, uh, will be removed, uh, for the new garage, uh, and, uh, parking area, uh, for the main residence. Uh, this is now, uh, the grading and utilities plan with, uh, erosion control, uh, as well. Uh, so basically the, as I said before, the, the garage, uh, will access from the, basically from, uh, the same level, uh, as the house, uh, close to the same, same driveway, uh, the garage will pull in here. And then, uh, the secondary, uh, apartment will walk out, uh, to a patio, uh, behind the, behind, uh, the apartment. Uh, obviously, we have the existing house, uh, and existing driveway, uh, so the, the garage and house have been set, uh, and the addition have been set to, to work with each other, uh, and to provide that's kind of, um, nice area for, uh, driving up, uh, to the house. The, the project will also, uh, include, uh, septic improvements, uh, which are under review by the Pudding County Department of Health. Uh, they, in their initial review, we are responding to comments at this time. There would be a new, uh, new septic area with a hundred percent expansion, uh, for the, uh, for the house. Uh, and basically the, the plan, which has been discussed with, uh, the department of health, is to reuse the existing four-bedroom house septic for the new three-bedroom, uh, garage to, to limit, uh, disturbance, uh, for the, for the new septic. Uh, the other improvements, uh, would be for the, the existing gravel driveways I previously discussed. Uh, the pool is basically just to do an overlay of asphalt, uh, on that. Um, so, uh, no work there, uh, outside of, uh, paving, uh, the existing driveway. Um, this, this is a, a type, type-two seeker, uh, it's a, a small, single-family home, uh, addition. Um, and we need the, we're seeking, uh, an erosion control and steep slopes, uh, permit. Um, I guess I would open up if there are any questions, uh, from the, the board at this time.
Uh, I have a... I have a question for one second. I see it's an existing four-bedroom house right now, correct, with a basement?
Correct.
And the two-bedroom extension, is it going to have a basement?
Yes, it will have a basement.
And so you're actually over, you've already four-bedroomed and another five bedrooms to the crack? Including the three?
Right. There would be, there's four bedrooms in existing residence. The new addition will have two bedrooms. And then there would be a three-bedroom, uh, apartment over, uh, the garage, so five.
You're over, you're Dublin, uh, over Dublin, they might, that are existing into the septic system with the new exit. Okay.
Right, which is, right. So now we have a, a six-bedroom, uh, bedroom house, uh, which will connect to a, a brand-new septic field over here. Uh, and then the existing septic, which is a, a four-bedroom septic, will now, uh, be taking just the three-bedroom garage. So there would be two separate septics, one for the, the main house and one for, uh, the garage.
Okay. Who wants to comment on this? Are you guys hearing me through the computer now?
Yeah.
Very faintly.
Yeah, we, I...
So as, if there are no comments, uh, I know, obviously, this is, um, this is a, a fairly, uh, it's a, a small project for, uh, addition of a, uh, addition to an existing house, uh, detached garage. The, the applicants are, are very anxious to be able to break ground as soon as possible. Uh, so, uh, we would like to, to move forward with the project, uh, I believe. Uh, and this is something where I may need some clarification, but if this is something that might be handled administratively, uh, versus a, a full, uh, continuing, uh, a planning board review. Uh, and then also, I guess we would need, uh, a referral to the town board for an erosion control bond. Uh, and we'd like to hopefully, uh, move both of those, uh, forward this evening.
Has this already had a hearing? Oh, sorry.
No, this is, this is new. Phil, I, I couldn't hear you. Would you like comments from the consultants or questions from the board still?
You should give your comments, because you sent memos.
I just can't. Can you hear him, Vera?
Yeah.
I can't.
I can't hear Phil now, though.
No, I can't hear him either.
But he did ask if you guys had comments, so I think go ahead with your comments, Bruce and Julie.
Oh, okay.
All right, that sounds good. And Liz, do you have something on this too?
Nope.
Okay. Um, okay, so as Eric said, this is a application for a two-bedroom addition to an existing single-family home, a garage detached with a three-bedroom apartment above, an expansion of the existing septic system and proposed parking area and expansion to the asphalt driveway. The parcel in question is thirty-two and a half acres in size. It's in the R80 zoning district. It's on the east side of the driveway intersection at Pudding Street. Right now, there's an erosion control permit requested. Um, wetland permit is to be determined. Eric, I did not, and perhaps you submitted it, and I just didn't get a copy of it, but I did not receive a, uh, an EAF. With respect to wetlands, I was actually in that area today, Eric, and I tried to, um, see if I could have a quick look, but there, the gate was locked and I didn't want to bother the people. So I will call, uh, in advance and make an appointment. And of course, if you want to come along with the site inspection, you're welcome to do so. And I'll arrange that, uh, probably in the next week or two, okay?
Okay, and I know, Bruce, you did, in one of your comments, had, uh, a question about the DEC wetlands.
Yeah. I, you had it on, on your form that it, it might, might be a DEC area, but I can't find that using the, the, the resources we have, Eric, so, um, I'm not sure you have. I'm sorry?
I'm, I'm not sure exactly where you saw that, but there is, uh, basically, uh, DEC wetland a significant distance down.
Yeah.
Um, I can't see the, the project, if you can still see my screen, uh, is up in this area. Uh, and I think maybe what, what the confusion was, was that's really the first surface water, which is a question on the NOI, is the first surface water that discharge leaving, stormwater discharge leaving the site would be. Um, but it is, yeah, it's, it's a significant distance away. There's definitely no need for, uh, a DEC wetland permit. But that was just, uh, trying to clarify if that was, uh...
Yeah.
The surface, true surface water.
Yeah, that's, that's what I saw too, Eric, and that's why I said, um, you know, my memo, if this is valid with respect to DEC wetland, and of course, need additional information. But I saw the same thing you did. It does not seem that the area of disturbance is even within a check zone for DEC at all. Um, so I think that, um, I think that clears it up. Yeah. Um, we don't know if you're going to be cutting any trees, and you are in that, uh, fat recovery zone area with respects to tree-cutting resistance, uh, uh, restrictions. The soil is considered to be chatfield, hollis, rock. I don't know if you have to do any blasting or, or chipping. And it looks like the garage, at least in part, is sited in an area of steep slopes. I'm not sure if that can be relocated to be at least out of the slope areas or not. Proposed disturbance is about nine-tenths of an acre. Um, Julie will talk to that more than I. I'm assuming it's not in a flood plain. We would get some cultural resource information from the, uh, EAF. The DEC does indicate this is a potential area of rare plants and rare animals. We do need to see the, uh, at least the EAF with the printer, printout, uh, septic system approval is pending. Eric, you don't need anything for the well at all?
Uh, no, there's new existing wells on the site. Uh, they would, um, going back to, going back to your EAF, uh, I'm sorry if that, that didn't, uh, get, get to you. Uh, we did do a short EAF. Uh, and, right, the, the, uh, automatic fill-out page, which I'm sharing now, right, the historic, uh, no, archaeological, no, my lands are other regulated bodies, no. Uh, it does have, it does know the northern long, you're fat. Um, I, I know there are tree-clearing cer- restrictions in certain circumstances with that, uh, pending, um, what type of trees it is and other stuff. Uh, I think we would try to work with the tree-clearing, uh, winter period. Um, but we can discuss that a little bit further if needed.
Yeah.
And then...
Okay, that's great. Yeah, and just if you could send me, if Vera has a copy of the EAF here, if you could send it to me. If you don't, Vera, Eric, if you can send that to her, and she'll send that to you.
I'll check mine too. Thought I sent you everything, but maybe not.
And just a couple of odds and ends. Um, I did not see a property survey, um, indicate any areas of blasting. Um, not sure how you want to address the runoff from any of your new impervious surfaces or if you need to. How's the property going to be used, including the garage apartment? I, I, I'm going to assume it's just for single-family residential, but I think the board should know if it's something other than that. Any utility connections to the garage, any exterior lighting? And, um, that's, that's really all I have. It's pretty straightforward, Eric, with just some odds and ends.
Right, so we are less than an acre of disturbance. Uh, so there is, uh, we do need an erosion control permit, but we do not need, uh, permanent stormwater, uh, treatment facilities, uh, because we are under that acre. We, we have, uh, and actually, um, this is the, the plan that was submitted. Uh, there was, we do, uh, and this is actually the, the septic plan, which, again, we are, uh, have revised to, to get back to the, the Department of Health, uh, but we did, uh, show, we will be, uh, discharging the, the roof drains. Uh, we can get that on a plan, not, not a big deal. The other thing is in regards to the, the apartment, uh, basically, uh, that it's not going to be in Airbnb, it's not going to be, uh, you know, rented out on a full-time basis. Uh, that would be used by the Vitello's, but we do have weekend guests or guests staying with them, uh, that would have accommodations there. Again, it's not a, a full-time rental or, or an Airbnb situation.
I know you went to the zoning board. Were there any restrictions imposed upon, uh, the garage and the apartment at all that the, that the zoning board of appeals had?
Um, yes, one of them was for it not to be used, uh, as an Airbnb.
To, to be used or not to be used?
Not to be used.
Uh-huh.
Uh, there was... Let me see if I...
First, I can send you the decision, because I sent it to Julie already, because I did the minutes for them.
The, the other one was, uh, re- uh, renewing the, uh, renewing it in five years. Um, I believe those were the two. Uh, obviously, the, the decision, uh, the, the committee.
That was the only thing.
Yep. My turn?
Anybody have any questions?
This sounds like a robo.
Do you have anything to add?
Really kind of mute the mic on the computer.
Julie, you got anything?
Yes, I do. Do you, Vera, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. So, um, my, I issued a fairly lengthy review memo. My main concern are how they're going to fit through the zero-point-nine acres of disturbance. Because once you go over an acre, they have to provide, uh, water quality control.
Is that something where you would want to see construction fenced, uh, to, to limit the area of disturbance?
Right, so, you know, what, where are the contractors going to park? Is there going to be room to store, whatever? Construction materials are going to need to be there, you know, all of those sorts of things, because, you know, they tend to like to use as much space as they can, and I know it's going to be very.
Right, and there, there is, uh, thankfully, there is the existing, um, driveway down to, uh, we label it a, a garage, it's more of a shed, uh, and then also, there is a, a dirt trail, uh, in this area, um, that exists that there would be plenty of parking, uh, for, for the, uh, for contractors on-site in the existing, uh, facilities, that nothing would have to be, uh, put in place. Uh, there is, uh, an area, uh, in the, in the yard, uh, and, um, obviously, some construction sequencing, um, you know, of being able to bring in materials, uh, to add on. Uh, but the, the staging would be basically in this area that I'm circling, uh, the plan now, with the mouse now.
Okay, so, yeah, so just if you can provide some more information on that, just to show how you're, you know, you're how you keep it to the point-nine acres. Um, one of my other, um, one of my other questions is, are there going to need to be any improvements where the driveway intersects Putting Street? I mean, it's, it's going to be a lot of concrete trucks and, you know, construction delivery vehicles. Is that, do they need to widen anything where it meets the road?
Right, I mean, we do have the existing house, uh, and that, you know, obviously, we have the, there was the construction vehicles, uh, concrete truck and everything that would be needed now, uh, to build the original house, uh, as well as the pool, uh, improvements and everything. So, uh, you know, we don't foresee, you know, we do not foresee any, any widening in the existing driveway for that.
Okay, and then the, uh, you know, the, the garage and the patio, and then there's some additional grating and the swale are all in the steep slope. So I don't know if there's any opportunity to slide it away from the steep slope or otherwise minimize the amount of disturbance on the steep slopes there? If you could take another look at that.
And I think part of that is, you know, obviously, we have the existing driveway, uh, which we're not rerouting. Uh, and then the existing residence, which, which isn't going to move. So, uh, to kind of work with that and work with the site, uh, and also, uh, the, the garage kind of works with that slope. Again, you've got the, the garage, uh, which is going to be at a, a similar, uh, floor elevation to the existing, to the existing house, uh, and then it's built into, uh, the hill, so not bringing, uh, behind the garage down ten feet to that level. Uh, the, the upper floor, uh, would come out, uh, you know, rough, roughly twelve feet, uh, above all the garage, so it's built into the hill to work with that topography. Uh, so I think it, it kind of, basically, this kind of, uh, all the existing conditions, uh, and how that, that garage and that apartment are going to work, uh, that this kind of basically is, uh, to work for the Vitelllos.
All right. Can you provide a, a proposed spot elevation for the patio to make it clear that it's, you know, it's a walkout from the second floor?
Yep, that, that's not an issue. We do have, I mean, we do have the hundred-and-ten.
Yeah.
Contour, which works with that, the upper floor elevation, so, but we, we can clarify that.
And then, uh, regarding the, the Z B A, the code, the code for accessory apartment is, uh, you know, it's pretty clear about maximum two bedrooms, and regarding the, the size of the, the accessory apartment relative to the size of the house, did the Z B A go over any of that? Did they, you know, approve having three bedrooms instead of just two bedrooms?
Um, Carol Kurth, the architect, is on, who, uh, was at the Z B A meeting, I don't know if, uh, I believe.
Hi.
Hi, Carol.
Hi, I'm Carol Kurth. I'm the architect for the project. I'm happy to answer questions as they arise. Um, the Z B A, um, approved it and said as long as it wasn't going to be used as a, a Airbnb or any type of a rental situation, and we renewed the permit within, uh, every five years, that they were comfortable with the design and the layout. So we were approved, um, for that. Um, you know, I just want to reiterate what Eric was describing about, uh, the garage and into the, into the slope, but sort of like a Frank Lloyd Wright, working with the hill and being of the hill, and having the second floor married to that elevation, um, that's on the contour, um, so that you can walk out from the second floor from that, uh, guest area. Um, and, you know, just reiterating what Eric was saying, um, about working with the existing driveway and the connections, sort of, um, a tight little area there, and we're trying to maintain the garage at north diagonal ninety degrees to the house, so we, we don't end up with these sort of skewed, um, elevations and roof lines. So we want, you know, to look, um, like it belongs.
We're going to build a bank barn, right, Carol?
What's that?
A bank barn.
A bank barn? That sounds like a cool thing.
That's a Pennsylvania thing.
That sounds really cool. Is it into the hill, and then the cows go out the top, and the cars and the trucks?
Oh, the cows are on the bottom, because that's a dirt floor with concrete trenches in it.
I like it.
Hay floor on the second floor.
I like it. Like, you know, in Bedford, there are a couple of those I've seen around, minus the cows. Now they're cars. I like it.
Carol, I'm Dennis. I used to be with the McDonald office in Armont.
Oh, my goodness. Hi, your name tag there says Barbara.
Well, yeah, that's her computer.
Gotcha. Okay, yeah, well, good to see you again. Good to see you again.
Same here.
So Eric, I'll give you a call when we can, uh, arrange to go out there and have a quick site inspection. Julie might want to come along as well, okay?
Okay.
Great.
Does anyone have any additional questions or comments?
So, well, the, the next question I have is, is, uh, whether or not the planning board wants to hold a public hearing. So for other projects where there's just been a, you know, a, a small addition, the planning board has declined to hold a public hearing. I mean, this is a bit bigger than just a small addition, uh, but also, they had been to the Z B A, so I believe they had a public hearing as part of the Z B A, uh, process.
Yep.
So that is, um, something the planning board members should discuss, whether or not they feel they should, uh, should have a public hearing or not.
I have one quick.
Is it too soon to go to administrative track as they asked?
Can I, can I ask one question, sorry? Does, could you tell me what the existing square footage is right now, what the proposed addition is?
That was on a plan somewhere that was submitted. Eric, do you have that information?
I have, the, the footprint of the addition is thirty-one-hundred square feet. The, the footprint of the garage is, uh, just over sixteen-hundred square feet, sixteen-hundred-and-twenty.
And the existing house?
The existing house, um.
Yeah, I don't have that information at my fingertips.
Yeah. I can get.
But I thought it was on the site plan that was submitted.
Is it on one of the zoning tables?
It should be.
On OP one, up on, on the table, the requirements? What's up there? I can't read it. I got the, the mini-plan here.
All right, um, we, we decided building coverage, which is allowed up to ten percent, uh.
No.
No, that's not.
But it's less than, we're, we're less than one per, basically, less than one percent.
All right, whatever you get, you can get it again.
I mean, if, if you look at, you know, just, just.
Portion-wise, it looks.
It's.
It looks similar.
Is roughly about the same.
Hmm, similar.
Similar in footprint, just, you know, eyeballing it from, from, I don't have an exact number.
I, I might just add that the new addition portion on, on the right, when you're facing, is a one-story element with a lower level. Um, it, it's not a mass of two stories. I mean, it has a cathedral ceiling in it, but it's a one-story element.
With the basement?
With the basement, mhm.
Okay.
So, Eric, any other questions?
Yeah, I got a clarification, Charlie Sisto. Uh, and maybe I misunderstood. It looks like there's two wells on the property. Are they existing well?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, they're both worth.
Liz, what actions do we have to take? If anything.
Have you decided whether or not you're going to hold a hearing?
Gentlemen, do we need to hold a hearing?
Usually do.
Sorry, Stephen, what is that?
I know.
I say we should have a public hearing.
Okay, I think we should have a public hearing.
I guess, just from a standpoint, you know, the, the nearest neighbor to the south, where the majority of the, um, improvements are, is it actually owned by the Vitelllos as well? Um, you know, we are still going to be, uh, o- o- one-hundred-and-forty-four feet, uh, from.
Sir, it has nothing to do with property and who owns what. It's just notifying the public that this is going on in their neighborhood.
Underst- I guess it's just a matter of, you know, what, what the impacts to the, to the neighbors might be. It's still going to be a single-family house, um, I was.
But it's not, I was saying, it's not just a small addition, it's quite substantial addition, so I think a public hearing is required.
On, if it were a small lot, uh, again, it is a thirty-two-foot lot, they are very anxious to, to move forward. Um, I believe that, that's a board's discretion, but, uh, I think in, in this circumstance, it would be something that, um, you know, would be, uh, because of the size of the property, because it is a, a single-family, that it would be something that, that would be reasonable, and it is a discretion.
Sure, we, we, we heard your presentation, and we heard your comments, but, uh, the board has voted.
Actually, let's do a real vote.
I'm going to do official.
Can I get a motion?
Set a public hearing for next month?
Set a public hearing.
I will, I will make that motion.
I will second. I'll second that. And Dennis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
Stephen?
Aye.
Simon?
Aye.
And I vote aye, too.
So, we will, I guess, see you for the public hearing. Uh, Vera, is there, what date is that? Do you have that off?
Um, yeah, I do just. I thought I did. Oh, yes, I don't. Eric, I'll send you that tomorrow, okay? It's the me- the meeting is the third, the second Thursday in September, and the notice has to be in the paper like ten days before that.
Okay. Does the town put the notice in, or do we have to put the notice?
No, you guys just have to notify that with the neighbors. I put it in the paper, though. I'll do that right away.
Thank you. Would it be the same neighbors that we did for the opening?
Yeah, yeah, it would be.
Okay, we'll get that over to Eric, so that he can do the public notice on this portion.
And like I said, I'll put it in the paper starting probably next week.
Appreciate that, thank you.
No problem, thanks.
All right, thank you.
Have a good night. Thanks, Eric.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks, Carol.
Thank you.
Good to see you, Carol.
Yeah, good to see you, too. Take care.
You, too. Live well.
Yeah, I like that, and stay safe.
Is there anyone here for Putnam Nursing and Rehabilitation Center?
I think we skipped something.
Yeah.
It's development.
Jamie's going to be real happy if we skip this. Be merry? Come on, I'm trying to play nice. Uh, I believe.
My bad.
It's okay. I believe I'm here, and, and also, Mr. Esposito is, is on the phone. Um, so I'm going to try and share the screen.
Why don't you give us a brief overview of your project?
Or. So. I'm doing that one, I was. Okay, so, um, Jamie LaJudas from Inside Engineering, Survey and Landscape Architecture, um, here on behalf of the Hilltop Estates, I'm sorry, that was the floor project, sorry about that. The Kent Development Associates project, um, and the Timber Harvest project, um, all being reviewed as one, uh, that consists of two parcels, the North Horse Pound Road parcel and commercial lot, which is three-point-two-six acres, which is shown here, um, and the Pexlip Road parcel. Uh, just switch back to the survey, you have the, the Kent Development Associates parcel, and then also Kent Development Associates parcel with the larger version. Um, we do have, uh, as part of this project, point-eight acres that are proposed to be conveyed from the larger parcel to the commercial lot, um, as a lot-line adjustment. We did get a variance granted, um, based on comments that we received back in two thousand and eighteen. We did get that variance granted in October, um, to extend the zoning, uh, district of the I O C to, that boundary to the proposed property line. So the current I O C zone runs basically some version through here and across. Uh, we did extend that up to the proposed property line, uh, so that the permit, the proposed use on the Kent Development Associates property, um, would be permitted. Now, we are proposing a contractor's office and warehouse, um, within a ten-thousand-square-foot building with an office mezzanine. The, um, there's the potential that the building may be constructed in two phases, uh, six thousand square feet initially, and then the remaining four thousand, uh, depending on how the owner wishes to do so. Um, parking spaces have been increased, uh, to adhere to the required number of spaces for that proposed use. Um, so we have, I believe, fourteen spaces proposed, uh, in this area here. Uh, we do have an access drive coming off of, uh, North Horse Town Road. Coming up to the site, it is basically the only access point to the property due to the, uh, existing wetlands on-site on, along the frontage and along the, um, eastern portion of the property. Uh, we did, uh, try to minimize the width of that access drive as well. Uh, we're proposing eighteen feet instead of anything larger, as that would be adequate. Um, we did, we are trying to minimize any disturb, as much disturbance as possible to, um, any wetland buffers and steep slopes, and that. Um, also shown on this plan, we have the tree removal. Um, also shown on this plan, we have the tree removals, um, that are proposed as part of the limits of disturbance and development on, um, this lot in particular, um, showing the X's here. Don't actually have trees located, um, in the Porsche, the 0.8 acres that are on the larger parcel. They did, they weren't, they just weren't survey located, um, but there are a few that would be removed, um, within that sector area. I think that was a comment, um, from Julie. Um, we are going to be proposing and providing to you an additional tree plan, um, that will include the potential for, the tree harvest project will be removing on this site, so you will have a general idea of what will be remaining, um, after the tree harvest and then after the, um, development. So that is forthcoming to you. Um, so as we mentioned, there will be, um, as you mentioned previously, there will be stormwater management proposed, which if I go to the next sheet, um, we can zoom in here, it's a little easier. We do have some, um, underground infiltration units that will treat the, um, impervious from the parking lot and the building. And then we do have a water quality swale toward the, um, North Horse Town Road to treat the, um, the road impervent and the drive impervious surfaces. Uh, we do also have outside storage shown that'll be, um, in this location and is proposed as gravel. Um, and then as we mentioned before, there is a, a timber harvest portion of the project that will be, uh, looking at harvesting selective trees from both. Bear with me, I'm sorry, both, um, the large parcel and the smaller parcel as well. And as I mentioned, we're gonna provide additional uh, uh, mapping on the smaller parcel to give you a better idea of what's gonna remain. Um, but if you have any further questions on that, I believe, uh, Jordan is also available, um, he's present on this call to help with that. Uh, the last meeting, we were asked to provide a, a full combined application for both projects. Um, we've, we've done that and then we have received comment letters, um, from the consultants, uh, which we will respond to accordingly. So that is the gist of where we're at at the moment. Um, I guess moving forward, are there any questions?
Thank you. Who wants to respond?
Julie or Bruce? Should I go first? Do you guys wanna go first?
I don't mind.
Go ahead, Liz.
No, Julie. Oh, you met me.
You got it, Liz. Take it off.
So.
Yes, true, it's already.
First of all, uh, my memo just came out this evening. Yeah, I wish I could have had it come out sooner. Um, but I was trying to really look at things and make sure that I'm creating something that tells the board the whole story. It's a tiny bit complicated. The proposed development itself really isn't, in, in my opinion, except that we need to document, um, on the plans, that it's in the context of a larger site and a timber harvest, and I think that's possible. Um, it's going to, it involves a special use permit, so that's no big deal. That's a matter of amending the application and dealing with those. Um, standards, site plan, a revised lot line, um, which Jamie mentioned, freshwater wetland permits, deep slope and erosion control permitting. And then, um, there has been a decision by the Zoning Board of Appeals, and I took a look at that, and that was the thing that kinda made it a little wrinkly. Um, so just, uh, what I did in my review memorandum, and I urged the board to kind of hang in there and read through, was to walk back through, um, that originally, this came to us in 2018, and I did just an initial review. Um, this was at a time when the subdivision was still alive, and, um, in that review memo, I had looked at the proposed configuration, and at that time, I had recommended that there be either, you know, bring the proposed development down to a level that could fit inside the IOC, uh, zoning district line. Um, which, I don't know if Jamie, you can point, the zoning district line is still the same. It hasn't changed. It's, um, it goes right through the building. And yeah, there you go. What the ZBA's decision effectively did was to allow the regulations of the IOC zoning district to be extended for an area approximately 140 feet into the site. So it allows the regulations there, but the Zoning Board of Appeals decision didn't change the zoning district boundary. Just what's allowed 140 feet into the R40 zoning district. When we started to do our review, Bruce, Julie and I put our heads together and immediately what came up was that when there is a commercial use in a commercial district within adjoining residential district, there has to be an additional setback and buffer. And in this particular configuration, it didn't work. Um, back in 2018, when we had started to look at this, the recommendation, as I said, was to either scale it back so it could fit in the IOC zone, or to go to the town board for a zoning amendment. And because it's not a big chunk of land, it's like a chunk of, um, I guess it's, it's only 0.8 acres. What I'd like to do, if I can, let's see if I can, I don't know how I can share this. Let me see if I can do this. I wanna show you the zoning context. Uh, here we go. Can you guys see that?
No.
No.
I might have to stop sharing. Hold on, let me stop sharing and then. Okay, sorry. That better? I think so. I can see your screen now. Okay, can you guys see my mouse wiggling?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
Yes.
I believe this is Horse Pound Road, where I have my mouse. Here is the project site. And you can see that it's colored lavender. And everything that's lavender is IOC zoning district, which is industrial office commercial. And then the rest of Mr. Esposito's land, so here's, here's the commercial piece, without the lot line revision, and the rest of Mr. Esposito's land, and, and again, Jamie, correct me if I'm wrong here, is this chunk? That is also, that is his, yes. Yep, and it's kinda wiggles around here, around these other lots. Exactly. And, and I don't know, you know, honestly, my recollection of 2018, it's, I don't, I don't lightly recommend a zoning amendment, but in this particular case, when I looked at the zoning map and all the surrounding IOC, what I saw was almost like this little indentation here, like a tooth missing from the IOC. Like, why didn't the line just go this way? I don't know, when it was originally adopted, why that was or wasn't. Um, but what we end up with here is this lot that's barely developable without some chunk of land, which I believe the chunk, correct me if I'm wrong here, kinda goes like this. No, it goes up a little bit and down? I think you were, you were right the first time. I was right the first time. It kinda goes out a little bit. Yeah, but then comes back. And then back down. Exactly. And, okay. And so I think the original concept was, go get a zoning amendment, maybe add, you know, whatever small piece you need, but obviously enough of a piece that you can do the additional, uh, 15-foot buffer setback. And I've, you know, looked at what the Zoning Board of Appeals did. Again, so the board understands, apparently their decision allowed an extension of the IOC regulations, so those IOC regulations are extended into this area, but it doesn't change the IOC zoning district boundary. The problem is the amount that it's extended didn't quite provide for the setback that's required between a commercial or IOC zoning district and an R40 or residential zoning district. So that's the dilemma. And, um, so I've tried to give you the whole history of what did or didn't happen. I don't have a lot of information from, um, the Zoning Board of Appeals, so one of the comments you'll see in there, Jamie, is that whatever it was you submitted, we should take a look at that. I'll try to look through the minutes and provide the board with, um, whatever they need to know about the Zoning Board of Appeals decision. Um, but I still come to the same conclusion that in order to straighten this out, the most appropriate zoning mechanism would be, um, a petition to rezone some land. And I don't, again, I don't make those recommendations lightly. Um, I believe that if the board has the information that they need, they may or may not see that favorably. So that's what I'm putting out there, because in any case, the area where IOC is permitted is hardly there. Um, it's just, it's just not extended enough to provide for the appropriate setbacks. The rest of this land had been proposed and approved for years for many, um, lots, and it is R40, which is like one acre. I'm sure they were mostly bigger than that, but still. So there could be lots in this area. So I don't think it's appropriate for the planning board to forego that extra, um, setback adjacent to residential uses and the buffering that goes along with it. So my memo is kind of framed mainly around that issue, and then I'm trying to ask for the specifics that we would need to move forward. Um, but, but that's the, that's the, kind of the macro issue in my mind, is how to get the zoning set up so that Mr. Esposito can move forward with this project in a way that addresses the town's code properly and addresses adjoining uses properly.
Thank you, Liz. Julie, do you have something?
I do. Though I, I also issued a rather, uh, lengthy memo, but my, uh, my main concerns are, you know, this, the site is quite tight between the property lot and then the wetlands. So one of my, uh, big concerns is how are they going to, to build it while maintaining their, their limit of disturbance when they're going in and grading the driveway and, you know, building the building? It doesn't look like there's a lot of room for, uh, construction staging, you know, contractor park, where they're gonna stack up all the materials and that sort of thing. And then, um, the, the stormwater management that they have, the swale and the infiltration system, those, uh, those stormwater management facilities can't accept runoff until areas that contribute to them are stabilized. So how is the stormwater going to be managed during construction when the sites all open? You know, I don't think just silt fence is going to control it. So that, those, you know, that's my, you know, sort of big concerns. Um, also looking for soil tests, infiltration tests for the infiltration system, uh, steep slope map, and then for the permit, you need to have, um, sign off to address the requirements for historic or, uh, archaeological sensitive areas. That'll need to be addressed. And then regarding the, the driveway, you'll have to meet the, you know, the code for the town in terms of slopes, um, but also for fire access. So they're going to have to confirm with the fire code and also with Town of Kent Fire Inspector, uh, whether there's enough space for width, um, and fire truck turnaround, and if they're going to have to provide, um, storage tanks for sprinklers and, and all of those other things that, that go along with commercial. So those are my, my main points.
Thank you, Julie. Bruce?
Um, again, as Julie indicated, I have a lengthy memo, which is often the case on a first review. Um, I'll just, um, center my thoughts on the highlights here, and I think that, um, one of the questions I have is that, looking at strictly the commercial property in question, the applicant is proposing to first log that site, and then after that, construct a commercial building and associated improvements. Um, I've been out to the site, um, a few times, and, um, the site has some wetlands, as Jamie indicated. Um, there's a lot of rock, there's a lot of steep slopes, as you can see, looking at the maps that have been provided. And I, I have a concern under seeker, if we are looking at the entire environmental impact of the project on the IOC, because if it was just simply a commercial construction project, minus the logging, I doubt seriously the board would be reviewing, uh, tree removal outside of the indicated limits of disturbance. But in this instance, that's not the case. And so, for example, the logging operation, because of our code, would be exempted from requiring a wetland permit to cut trees down within the wetland buffer. Um, but they, that's not the case necessarily, um, if it's not in operation. So what's kinda happened is that the trees are proposed to be cut in the wetland buffer as a logging operation, and then the commercial building is coming in thereafter, and the stormwater basin actually appears to me down at the end of the driveway to be in wetland buffer, which is usually imprudent to do. Um, so my central issue is kind of the cumulative impact from both projects on the, uh, IOC piece, and I need to look into that a little bit further and perhaps talk to, um, Jeff Battistoni as well. Um, Jordan and I had worked out most of the details in March, uh, regarding just the strict logging operation. Um, I did have a couple of questions remaining on that, one of which I had requested the applicant consider not logging completely to the property borders, but providing a buffer where there would not be any cutting along the edges of the property, and I, I don't know what was decided on that. And then there was a discussion that was going to be had with the highway superintendent regarding, uh, truck moving and, um, conditions of roads, et cetera. Um, so those are the two items really I had remaining. I think Julie, you had a couple of, uh, erosion controls issues on just the logging. Um, but again, to get back to the point, I have, I, I just need to examine a little bit more fully the cumulative impacts of both the logging action as well as the commercial development action on the same parcel.
Thank you, Bruce. Gentlemen, you have any questions?
No.
Jamie, you have any questions, or have we helped you out?
Um, you've enlightened me further. I, I would like to add a couple of things, if I may. Um, am I sharing my screen? Do I need to stop sharing? Hang on. Yeah. Okay, sorry about that. That's okay. We're kinda figuring this out as we go. It's all right. I'm, you know, old dog learning new tricks. I haven't figured it out either. No worries. Um, okay, so I, I did, uh, so I have this up, let me just show. I did, I did supply, um, an additional plan to the board and the consultants, and I just wanted to go through this, cause honestly, I just forgot. Um, but I just wanted to go through this and give you a general idea of what is surrounding the site and how close this building is to everything else, um, including the, the residential zones and the nearest, you know, nearest residences, basically anything, and what is really around it. Um, so it's zooming in here, cause it's a little difficult to see. You know, we have this, the site here is in red. We have the, the building itself, and then I have the, the nearest building, and these are, are rough numbers, but the nearest building being the residence to the, um, southeast is 390 feet approximately. Um, and that's through, through woods. I mean, you know, there's, there's, half of that is on our property and half is on, on his property. Um, the next nearest being, uh, 460 feet, and then all of the residential areas that would require that additional 15-foot buffer, um, that borders, you know, the IOC zone are, are over 920 feet of mature wooded forest. Um, you know, there, there's gonna be portions of this that are gonna be logged as part of the timber operation, but again, it's still, you know, this, this parcel in particular is not gonna be touched. Um, and we'll actually have another figure that we're gonna submit that will show all of the existing vegetation uh, surrounding our parcels that will not be touch, you know, it's, it's off our property, it's not gonna be.
uh, surrounding our parcels that will not be touched. You know, it's, it's off our property, it's not going to be touched. Um, that will not only screen the building and any of the operations on site, but you know, assist it with any type of visibleness of that property. Um, you know, you have nine hundred and forty feet to nine hundred and seventy feet, over a thousand to, to these guys. There's, there's significant amounts of vegetation that will remain. Um, and then also not shown on this particular plan, but on, on some of our other plans, there are steep slopes up the wazoo over around on this parcel. Um, so you know, there's, there's really no way to put a residence over here. I mean, trust me, we, we've looked at it so many times when we were going through the iterations of that Hilltop Estate subdivision project. Um, of the majority of those, the houses, you know, there was being a house that was originally proposed here. There was, uh, I believe what the nearest house was, was somewhere in this vicinity. Um, and you know, the road coming up in between, you know, some of the lots on either side of it. But you know, there's, there's still a significant amount of, of existing vegetation that would be present there if the house were ever proposed in that particular location. So that would be, you know, essentially our, our justification, some of our justification for why we are asking for waiver of that fifteen foot setback in addition to the existing setback for the building. But we did take a look at moving the building outside of those, that additional fifteen feet. Um, but I think it, it has more of an adverse impact on, on these guys down here. I mean, you would be moving this additional fifteen feet toward their development. You know, all of this would, would push down the hill into the buffer further, into steep slopes further. Um, and, and closer to these residences. So I, I think that's, that's part of our argument as well. Um, so I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention. And just to give you some context, we'll kind of, we'll give you some further information on, on this plan as far as what you know, what trees obviously we're not touching and, and going into other people's property, of course, but um, just, I just wanted to give you that, that view, that, that I think this is extremely important for you, you all to see.
Hey, Jamie?
Yes.
Where, where, could you just um, show the boundaries of the residential piece as it articulates with the commercial site? Real quick, you can maybe zoom out a little bit. There you go. So where's Mr. Esposito starting down on North Horsebound?
So North Horsebound uh, being here.
Right.
So this is the, the commercial lot.
Right. Now, does he join, I don't know if it's north, south, I'm sorry. The piece you just went up from North Horsebound, does Mr. Esposito own this piece here? Kind of move, move down, move down to the left there, yes.
No, so he does not own this. This is a neighbor.
Okay.
They have an existing residence on site already.
Uh, right.
That is, you know, over nine hundred feet away.
That's true.
Building.
Okay.
Believe that's, this is the, the church properties across the street here and the cemetery.
Yep. Okay. And then the rest of it, moving around, uh, that's all Mr. Esposito's residential piece.
So this is all part of the residential
Oh, way out to fifty-two?
Right out to fifty-two. That was that old commer, we all called it the old commercial lot. That we would come back to you guys for a, a site plan that was part of that subdivision. Um, where he was going to put a, another, another office warehouse type contractor yard deal there.
I see it. That's also, yeah, that's in IOC.
Correct. So that's the zone line. That's line along that section. Yep.
Okay, Jamie, on the subdivision plan that was coming through a long time ago, that showed all the lots and the proposed road and everything else.
Yeah.
Um, down toward the bottom of the hill, there were, I think, were there two great big retention basins proposed in here?
Were, yes. So, so we had stormwater from, from this road that happened, that was somewhere in this vicinity.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
We did have them coming down and there were, there were basins. I want to say there, there was piping here and there was something-ish hereish.
Yeah, that's right.
Because I, that was a long time ago for me to remember those exact locations. But yeah, again, tho- those, you know, those were previously proposed. Um, obviously, if anything were, were proposed on this lot, currently, we would have to rework anything that was going on through here because it wouldn't be on his property anymore. You know, with this, this portion being conveyed to this lot.
So, so Jamie, another quick question, you know, we discussed earlier this um, code requirement to, to have this heavily uh, wooded buffer area uh, between the residential and the commercial. And so just getting back to the logging, and I know we just discussed this, but for the benefit of the board, would you want to modify the logging so that you would retain the existing trees in that existing buffer? So they wouldn't cut down trees to plant new trees required by the board? Have you talked to Jordan about that and have you worked on that at all?
We have discussed, um, we have discussed that. And I think once I, once we submit the, the plan with the trees that have the potential to be removed with the timber portion of the project, um, I think that's, that'll help everyone's understanding of what's going to be removed as part of that and what's going to be removed as part of, of this actual development.
I, I guess the thing that keeps coming back to me is that I, I, you know, I understand that, you know, you look around your site and you see all this, you know, land that's wooded, et cetera. Um, and so it looks like, well, off of this commercial site, there will still be some buffer, but ordinarily, when a land development is proposed and a buffer is required, the buffer is supposed to be provided on the lot that's being developed.
Sure.
Because technically, um, an applicant wouldn't have control. So for example, the property that I think is to the um, it's the one that's over to the left, or I guess it would be to the southwest. You know, there's no control over what they might do with their land and whether they might subdivide in the future and where they might put their lots. Um, and the other thing is that, you know, since Mr. Esposito does, is that my mouse? Okay, does have control over um, the piece where all this wooded area is. I guess the, the thing is, if, if this commercial development is viable and all that's needed is, you know, an extra fifteen feet on that side to do that. And that's, as you say, steeply slop, steeply sloped and wooded. I don't understand the hesitation with just adding that in. Then it's guaranteed, then anything beyond that is, you know, you could still subdivide and do what you want with it. But otherwise, in order for the, the planning board to have any guarantee that that fifteen, that extra fifteen foot buffer would be provided adjacent to a residential zoning district as required, it either has to be on the site or there has to be some kind of a, a restrictive covenant or something on the adjacent site, which is Mr. Esposito's. So, you know, one way or another, it needs to be provided for sure. And the board doesn't really have a reason for giving that up because it's feasible to do. And it really should be on the property that's proposed for development. And again, I don't have a problem with this site development. It's just a matter of, you know, adding in whatever is necessary to make it fly. And we're talking about fifteen feet.
I think, I think, I think, corrected from wrong, Jamie, the challenge is not so much making the line work uh, that's common with Mr. Esposito's property. It's this kind of corner here, yeah, you got down here, that's with the joining property and how to make that work. I think that's kind of the how to make that work is the question.
Absolutely. So um, I, I just want to touch on quickly on um, Liz's comment. So were you, were you kind of throwing an idea out there that maybe this lot line be extended out another fifteen feet to make sure that that works?
I'm thinking make that, make that lot line extended. Make it bigger.
Right. I mean, but the way to do it is via, uh, you know, a rezoning because I took a look at the mechanism that was employed for the other decision. It's not clear to me that that was the most effective mechanism. And so I wouldn't encourage using it again.
The other, the other thought I had you guys, but again, I don't think, Jamie, it solves the issue with the property on there, but, but with the board, maybe this is a goofy idea, entertain a strip of land on Mr. Esposito's residential that would be placed in conservation easement and held in perpetuity. There would be no tree cutting in that area and provide control of that buffer in that fashion as well and obviate the need to go back for all these boards for zoning changes. But again, you know, it just, I don't know, Jamie, if you can rotate this building around or do something because that one corner seems to be the real hassle.
No. So the, the problem we run into is you, you know, the, the buffer is down below here. You really, we can't get, we can't move the driveway out. The, the wetland is right there. There's, this is the only access to the property. So there's no way we can get out of fifteen feet off of there without.
We don't, we don't need a buffer from the driveway. It, it's.
Okay, okay. Nope, just.
So if that helps.
All right.
Okay. The driveway, where the driveway is, I don't, who's going to see the driveway?
But then it comes into, to this, to where the building is, pushing, pushing the building further downhill. The, you know, the infiltrators can't be within a certain slopes, I think it's fifteen percent. Um, you know, we, we would then be pushing our grading, you know, the infiltrators, the building further and closer to all the wetland buffers that are here.
So the infiltrators are kind of sandwiched between the two buffers, they say.
Right. They're, they're kind of stuck where they are.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, you can only put, you know, I'm, I'm not an engineer, so please don't quote me on this part, but you know, my understanding is there's only, there's a certain amount of height of fill you can put on top of them for it to be viable. Um, you know, we have this, the retaining wall there. So basically pulling the cur, you know, you can't really put the curb and the wall on top of the infiltrators. That kind of defeats the purpose of the infiltrators, I guess.
What can you do, though, on that western side? I mean, can you add some landscaping? Is there? I mean, that's, that's a retaining, a boulder wall?
That is a boulder wall, yes.
But what about between the building and the lot line? What could you add there?
In, like in, in here?
It's all trees. I mean, it's already, I don't, I don't know anything about what Jamie's trying to do here, but it's all woods.
On the property? Aren't you removing those trees to do grading?
We are.
Yeah, but I mean, it's surrounded by woods. That's the part I don't understand. I mean, you can't even, Mr. Mr. Fuchs couldn't see anything from there and everything uphill is Mr. Esposito's. I, I, I'm, I'm trying to chime in where I shouldn't be, but I just.
No, it's.
It's all woods.
Right. That's, that's why I'm advocating not cutting that stuff down, Jordan. You're exactly right. Um, that's kind of the buffer that needs to be maintained in the code. Hey, Jamie? How does, bring, how does the tra, the traffic comes up the driveway? And then basically goes to the, towards the stormwater infiltrator side?
Yep. So you have, your parking spaces are here.
Right.
Back in.
And loading areas and stuff.
Yep, so you have a loading area. Loading area is um, within the, the outside storage area. So you'd come, it's come up, they could either pull in, back in, come out, fall in, back out, come out. Um, there's also the overhead doors where you'd have vehicles to potentially go in and out depending on, on the use of the property. That type of, of thing.
Yeah. Is it possible to slide the building towards the infiltration structures and have the access and loading being on the other side? Creating room between the boundary and the other side of the building to bring traffic in and get the building outside the buffers required?
Well, I have another question. What about, what does the building look like from, on that side? Is it possible to make it, you know, a color or a texture that's more natural looking?
I, I think.
There's always that potential.
Whatever we do to reduce any visual or noise really has to be on the property. We know all the trees on the western side are going to be removed. So what can be done? I guess that's the question here. Like, what can we?
Well, I just want to complete my thought here.
Sorry.
That's okay. Jamie, you don't think it would be of any benefit to slide the building towards the infiltration and bring the access into the other side, getting the building further away from the property lines?
You're talking about still got a grading plan. So, so you're talking about basically swapping this, this access drive to be over here.
Correct.
And have the building over here.
Correct.
And I mean, unfortunately, it kind of kills your parking spaces.
Well, I'm just, what's the setback requirement on that, on that side there, Jamie? Is it, it's fifteen feet plus what, forty? I can't remember.
No, this is only.
Fifteen plus twenty?
Twenty foot side foot, twenty foot.
It's twenty plus fifteen.
Thirty-five feet.
Thirty-five feet.
And what do you have right now?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one. So the building has to be thirty-five feet away and we need fourteen feet. Just something to think about, Jamie.
We, you know, the building would have to be here.
Yes.
Right. Parking. If there was something where we could do some type of, of screening along this, this edge in lieu of doing the fifteen foot setback.
That would help.
Well, that, the fifteen, this, the screening, unfortunately, my read of the code, the screening is inherent in that added buffer. So it's not an and or, or, it's, they have to be fifteen feet further away and you have to have the screening. So.
But that fifteen feet has the opportunity to be waived by the planning board if they deem it acceptable.
Well, sure.
It would have to be some convincing, I think. There would have to be something.
I'm trying.
So Jamie, Jamie, I would like, I would request, you just look at swapping things out. If you move the drawing down a little bit, great. What is this septic area? Okay, so that's got a relatively modest, so I don't know. I just, I just would like to see if that can work. Were you just swapping the, the parking and the access to create the additional zoning setback requirement for the building?
Uh, we can, we can look at that.
Okay.
I mean, I mean, the other thing, I, and I don't know if this helps in your configuring things. Um, your outdoor storage area, like, I'm just kind of looking. I know you said you were going to lose the parking. But is there a way to sort of swap the proposed gravel outdoor storage area with the parking area? But I don't know if that works or not.
Some serious design requirements that we'd have to really review as we start to swap things all over the place.
And the building has to be that way. It couldn't be turned ninety degrees.
Yeah. I mean, it kind of works. It works well with the grading as it is.
Gotcha. Gotcha.
Jamie, what's the phasing look like? You mentioned, like, was it six thousand square feet first and then four thousand? What, what does that look like? You know?
Um, I believe our intention was to have the initial six thousand in this, on this end of the building.
Mm-hmm.
And then the remaining, if needed. I mean, there, there's the potential to have the phasing. It's not, it's not set in stone that they're looking to not do all ten thousand square foot of the footprint.
Right. This is Dick, this is Dick Esposito, you hear me?
Yes.
Yep.
Uh, as, as the configuration, that was our original thought was six thousand plus a four thousand uh, additional and get the approval for the ten thousand. As it looks now, the ten thousand is going to go forward in, in its entirety. Uh, the parcel is under con, the parcel is under contract to sale at the present time.
Okay, so, so phasing's out the window.
Yeah, yes. Basically, I, I, I think we'd have to say that it's out the window, yes.
Okay.
So, so yeah, I mean, we can, we can look at swapping the building and the the access drive. And see what that, what that produces. Can just provide a, a quick sketch on that.
Is parking allowed in the extra fifteen foot setback? Or is that prohibited?
Um, I did, I did have a parking comment, um. Uh, the minimum, there's a minimum distance or accessory buildings in using, uses, including off-street parking and loading to the property line with a value of not less than twenty-five feet.
So to parking.
But it doesn't say about drivers. Drivers have to be.
I don't think there's a restriction on the, where the driveway is. It's just the parking.
Right.
And then one other comment I forgot to include was that um, retaining walls over three feet in height need to have a building permit. So if the retaining wall is over three feet in height and falls within a setback, then it's likely it will need a variance from the ZBA. But you'll have to discuss that with the building inspector.
Why? Because it, if it needs a building permit, would it need to have a variance? It's not a building.
Right, but because it needs a building permit for being over three feet, because if it falls in the setback, then it triggers it. You need a variance. But you'll have to talk to Bill Walters, to be sure.
That's similar to having like a fence.
More like a shed.
Jamie, do you want to work on some of this and then get together with us at the consultants meeting, perhaps Mr. Esposito as well, is of course welcome, and kind of look at this some more? What, what are your thoughts?
I think the more that we meet, the better. Um, so, yeah, I, I think that would be a great idea. Uh, we I believe our, the next mission is this coming Thursday, so we'll provide as much as we can.
And the consultants meeting is the twenty-fifth, Jamie. I guess I would encourage board members and also Mr. Esposito and Jamie, take a look at the zoning map, the, you know, I'm just think, looking at that piece that was going to be commercial. And one corner of it, I mean, if you're just you, you'll, you'll see, it's like a, it's like a tooth missing in the IOC zoning district, and it's Mr. Esposito's property. And, uh, you know, it just might give the flexibility that you need to do what you want to do, and also it could connect with that other piece, I think. I don't know. That's something for you to think about. I realize that there is a shyness about undertaking, um, a zoning petition. And I don't know how the board feels about any of that. But at least look at that alternative amongst the other things we've discussed.
Okay, the timing wise, on that, that same line, timing wise, what would we be looking at if we were to even entertain that avenue? As far as, you know, how long would it essentially, an approximate, would it take to get something rezoned? I mean, is that going to be, like, a meeting with the town or with the town, this is with the town board, I'm assuming?
Yeah.
I mean.
I mean, you, you would want to have a discussion with them to see if they even, you know, would entertain the idea, but, um, you know, I, I would imagine that you know, I don't know if they would want to be lead or allow the planning board to be lead. Um, that would, could be worked out between the two boards, but it would be one project with all the different approvals being reviewed under Seeker. Um, you know, they would need a hearing, but again, you'd, before you even consider a petition, I think you'd want to maybe speak to the supervisor or, or float the idea to the town board to see how they respond. You know, and the reason I brought it up to the planning board is that if the planning board has any feeling about it either positively or negatively, um, you'd have a clue too, because you know, whether or not they feel like they want to make a recommendation. That's kind of the way. That's why I raised it, to just, if there's an opportunity to, you know, take a poke at it and see if it's something that could fly, it might be in Mr. Esposito's and the town's best interest to have a little bit more IOC layer. So.
We will review that. Um, then my, uh, another point that I wanted to, uh, bring up with the board. I know we are not necessarily at a point where we can set the, this project on for a public hearing, uh, which we do have some more information to provide to you, and, um, we just need to clean up our plans and, and respond to comments. Um, but can we at least circulate for the planning board to be lead agency? Is that something that the board would consider doing tonight?
In my review, I recommend, recommended no action just because there were so many question marks. I don't know how Bruce and Julie feel about that.
Well, I guess, you know, Jamie, it's a good point, but I, I think with circulation, you know, you want the documents going out to the involved agencies that are reflective of what's going to be submitted and, and reviewed. I don't know if we're quite there yet. Um, so am I, I, I kind of agree with, I'd like to see it, but I'd like to, I, I think I agree with Liz.
Yeah, I agree with Liz.
Does the planning board have any questions or? Feedback?
Well, I'm concerned it's going to set a precedent if we do this, change this line completely, or, you know. I, I'm a little concerned about that.
What line would?
For all the projects that come along, somebody can say, okay, you did it here, we can do it over there.
And if you don't, we're suing.
Once it's, once it's enacted, that, that, that's it.
Yep.
Yep.
And you'll have every IOC trying to slide into residential area.
That's correct.
I think this is more a zoning board.
That's correct, too, sir.
What are we discussing at this moment? I, I'm confused as to, what, what line are we talking about? The zone line being adjusted?
Yeah, the reason I'm raising it to get feedback from the planning board is because one of my recommendations in here, it's based on what was recommended in two thousand eighteen was to go for a petition to rezone, you know, make an adjustment in the IOC. That's the reason I displayed the zoning map, because you can really just kind of see, there's like an empty spot there in the IOC. Um, and it looked like approximately the same area that you might need to make this fly. And that was the only reason I recommend, I recommended it, because what happened anyway was after that recommendation in two thousand eighteen, um, it went to the ZBA instead under a provision that may not be applicable. And so I wouldn't suggest going back to the zoning board of appeals because uh, I'm not sure it's an appropriate way to go. Under that provision. So, that was why I suggested this, and then the only other thing is that if there's going to be a waiver of this buffer, then the planning board, in order to consider that waiver, would really need some reassurance that there's something substantial done to compensate for the lack of that buffer.
But not even that. I think, as you said, you have to come up possibility of moving the building closer to the, to the east. You have to try and, and that as well.
Yeah, not all avenues have been, seem to be explored.
Yeah, I.
Later, because wow, the building looks good there.
Liz, do we have to do anything at this point?
I'm not recommending the board take any action. I just thought the point of tonight was to have some discussion.
I think we've done that. Anybody have any more questions?
Yeah, I, I got a few questions from Bruce, well, maybe from the board in general, um. Would it help at all if we just, if I went out there and flagged out the, uh, Dick's, uh, small property there and just kept it to the larger parcel for the timber harvest?
Say that again, Jordan?
Sure. Sure, I'm sorry, Jordan, just, just run that by me again.
If we were to, if I was to go out there and mark the property boundaries for the small parcel, and we just cut that out of the timber harvest, uh, completely, would that help anything getting, getting the, uh, getting basically the access approved to do the timber harvest?
Well, yes, uh, Jordan, one of the questions that would help with would be this, what I brought up a while ago, which is this kind of cumulative impact of both of those actions on the same parcel, the timber harvesting and the construction of, of the commercial per, of building. So that would help in that respect if that was no longer being logged. We'd have one action, and that would be the commercial building on the site. Um, also, I think that would help in maintaining this wooded buffer that's uh, in the town code between the residential and the commercial boundaries. So those are two benefits. However, it would not resolve the issue that's been really talked about a lot, and that's this additional fifteen foot setback requirement in the location of where the building is right now. So to answer your question, yes, that would help in many respects, but the question of where the building is is still going to be an open issue.
And the building still straddles two pieces of land that are intricately connected now.
Well, I mean, the, that land would be, would be conveyed to here, so it would be one property.
Right.
So it would be only on one property.
I mean, Bruce, you've obviously given thought to what these cumulative, cumulative effects would be of both projects going on, and I, I don't really understand what your concept of, is, is of a timber harvest, but I think it is that everything's going to be cut and you're going to have a clear cut. I mean, we're cutting maybe two percent, three percent of the total trees growing on that on the entire fifty, well, on the proposed forty-seven acres. So I, I really don't, I, I, I always bring it back to the New York City watershed up in the Catskills. I mean, we do timber harvest up there all the time with no issues, and in fact, we get funding to do those. So I, I really don't understand what the, I, I just believe that you don't want to see any of the trees cut. This is fine. Like, that's how you feel about it, that's fine. But Mr. Esposito's been paying taxes on this property for a number of years now. And I, I just don't understand what you, what your thoughts are on the cumulative effects. I, I just, we're only cutting five hundred trees on forty-seven acres.
You don't understand, this is the law.
There is no timber harvesting law. It's only a steep slope and erosion control permit. There, you have no timber harvesting code.
It's not the timber harvest, it's the SECA. So environmental impact of your operation going on in conjunction with this commercial operation and construction building, do you not understand that?
No, I, I don't, because this started out as a timber harvest project, and somehow you guys lumped in the commercial.
Harvest project, you would not be objecting to that. This is a problem of, of IOC slipping into residential zone. This is a much bigger project. It is not, has nothing to do with timber harvest. Understand that?
Well, no, what I don't understand is, like, to me, it looks like this commercial site is on a separate parcel. Mr. Esposito just happens to own both parcels.
So he's requesting a change on that other parcel. Do you not understand that?
Well, well, and that's what I'm, that's what I'm trying, that's what I tried to suggest. To just not cut trees on.
Understanding this, he's changing the lot line on that parcel.
And that's fine. I'm suggesting that we don't cut any trees on whatever that line is. Like, whatever that, would, however that property changes, I don't, like, I'm just sug, suggesting not cutting those trees.
So, Jordan, thank you for your insight. So, um, couple of responses. First of all, my intent is to not obstruct cutting trees or not. We've been looking at trees in Kent, you and I, for several years now, on several operations. So what I don't understand is where you're coming from with that respect, but that's for another day. The idea here is, my question to you is, would you be considering logging this property knowing full, i- if the commercial development was already going, going on? You have precious little land left to do logging after the commercial building is constructed. So this is a steep slope, as you might recall. There's wetlands and wetland buffer on virtually at least half the site. And we're not the Catskills. You might recognize us as a little more densely developed than the Catskills.
I understand.
And there are major and more significant impacts to the environment here, as well as additional laws on a local level than compared to the Catskills. I was hoping you would know these things. So the idea behind this, the, the thing behind this, Jordan, is the cumulative impact is when you do a, a logging operation of selective tree cutting plus a, 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 a construction of a commercial building with tree removal within the limits of disturbance as required, what does that mean to the site? That's accumulative. They're two separate actions. What does it, does it mean to the site? And that's what I have an open mind and I'm trying to evaluate. You understand?
Let me, this is, this is Dick Esposito. I, I'd like to interject in here a, a little bit. I understand, I understand what you're saying, that the, the, the timber harvesting and the commercial parcel are, are interwoven together. Well, the, the commercial parcel is going to be cutting, clear cutting where the, where the, where the building goes, where the parking goes, where the storages, where the, where the driveway is. The, the timber par, uh, logging operation is not, is not gonna, not going to impact the construction of the commercial parcel at all. The, the logging operation, and what Jordan is saying, is that he proposes that we don't cut logging in, on the commercial parcel, or the separate little point eight acres that goes into the residential area, uh, of my property. And that should, that should, that should weigh in that there's no disturbance, that the logging has nothing to do with it. As a matter of fact, if he went in there and logged, and then we cut, we put the commercial into it, there'd be nothing, not, there'd be no difference. Anyway, what comes first, the chicken or the egg? Uh, 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 he's trying to appease you in saying, okay, we won't log in the commercial piece. Is that satisfying you? It should.
I think that, Dick, that's what I said, that would help in two ways. Number one, it would address the cumulative issue. And number two, it would potentially provide you with the vegetative buffer as required in the code between the residential and the commercial parcels. I, I thought I was clear on that. I'm sorry if I wasn't. What I was saying.
It's not, it's not, it's not clear to me. What are you talking about, uh, the, the cumulative issue? There is no cumulative issue.
There is, if you're if you're cutting trees down in a, in a, in a selective timber harvest, okay, that's, that's one action. You'd be cutting down, I don't know how many trees, Jordan, on that commercial property. Maybe, let's pick a number out of the air, a hundred trees. Probably less. But now, you are clear cutting, no longer a selective harvest, clear cutting the entire area of disturbance as you need to do to build your building and your improvement. Now, it's no longer a hundred trees that are being cut. It's maybe a hundred and twenty trees or twenty-five trees being cut in the limits of disturbance, and another thirty or forty trees being cut outside of the limits of disturbance as in the logging operation. That is accumulative. There's more trees being cut with the combined actions of the tree timber harvest and the commercial development than if not. And that's what I need to look at, and I'm trying to keep an open mind, because it's a steep slide, a steep sloping site. Got a lot of rock, got a lot of wetlands and buffer, and I, I want to evaluate that. I haven't come to a conclusion yet. I, I, I'd like to evaluate that and see if that's an issue or not. So, to begin, one more time, if you are indicating that you're not going to be cutting any trees down other than those in the limits of disturbance, you're not going to be cutting inside of the commercial property on a timber harvest basis, and that resolves, again, that cumulative impact of both actions on the same parcel and should help resolve the requirement to have a vegetative buffer between the commercial and residential boundaries. It doesn't resolve, I'll say this one more time, what we've been spending most of the time talking about, which is the building location within the setbacks that still needs some work, right? Does that answer your question?
Understood.
So, it's just, I, I just need to clarify. So it does help if we do not do a, a selective harvest at all on the commercial site?
Jordan, again, if you are saying you're not going to harvest on the, on the. Jordan, again, if you are saying you're not going to harvest on the, on the commercial site.
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
You are then evaluating and saying that we are going to take away any impacts of the harvest of the trees.
Yes.
And that is removing the cumulative impact because there's only now one impact to evaluate. And that is the removal of trees within the limits of disturbance.
And potential, um, lots they, they plan on trying to request too.
So I'm sorry if it wasn't clear, but, but that, does that answer your question?
Yeah, no, that, that, yeah.
Okay.
Did you guys hear what Steve was saying that, that what you guys are talking about, I assume also includes the lot line revision chunk that's to be added? That's part of the commercial.
Correct.
Okay.
Are we sitting now? Everyone's happy?
Well, I think I got some good feedback that the whole zoning petition idea is not a go.
What was that?
That the, the, the business of the board being positive about um, a zoning petition to rezone land as part of the remedy, that's not something that the planning board thinks is a good idea. That's what my feeling. Is that correct?
It is correct.
Okay, that's helpful.
I think it would be far easier just to move the building a little bit. Investing with moving the, any kind of lot line revisions that'll help out with the, the, the timber harvest going forward, it, it solves a lot of issues.
Okay. So we will be submitting a revised application to you shortly.
And I know we didn't have a workshop last Thursday night, but I think we just had a workshop.
Or two.
Thank you, Jamie. Thank you, Mr. Esposito.
Yeah, thank you, Jamie.
Thank you. Can I, can I, can I interject myself? One second? Um, in conjunction, you mentioned workshop. Uh, that is a very important issue to us in that, uh, when you have a workshop, we, we, we would be there at the workshop and we would know from the, from the, uh, consultants of what we should attack or what we should change or what we should modify or what questions we should answer to the board meeting, which is one week away. Uh, we did not have that opportunity this, this month. And I would hope that in the future, that we, at the workshop, that we have the, uh, information from the consultants so that we can move forward on the changes and modifications needed for the, for the, uh, board meeting.
There were, there were fractures in, in the area and tropical storm that hit on Tuesday, two days before the workshop, three members were able to make it, but could not have a quorum.
He didn't have a quorum.
So we did everything possible and that was going above and beyond just to try to make that happen. I personally had storm damage, so I know all this, not an easy storm on the community.
And nothing, Dick, I didn't have service or, uh, I didn't have internet service or power until Saturday, so.
But I also just want to address, Mr. Esposito, I know, um, you talked about having the information from the consultants. Um, as a general practice, um, the consultants go to the workshop. We may have done our review so that we can speak to the board. But it's been our practice to provide comments after the workshop, not before. So just to be clear about that, that that's.
I agree with that. It should be discussed at the meeting, the regular meeting like was discussed tonight.
Okay.
That's where the public sees it.
And, you know, honestly, I think under normal circumstances, I think Bruce, Julie and I try to get our comments out by like Tuesday before the meeting, you know, um. Every board that I work with is different. Um, I don't prefer handing the board a memo the same night, but sometimes circumstances require that. And I'm sorry that that, uh, caused you an inconvenience.
And the board can't always react as quickly as we may like. We apologize. Jamie, are you satisfied?
I'm, I am taking your comments, um, and, and we'll come back and reflect on them and provide responses back to you accordingly. Thank you very much for the comments tonight.
Great. Uh, is there anyone here for O'Mara? I believe O'Mara's next. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jamie.
O'Mara?
Okay, so, uh, I'm going to talk. For O'Mara, Peaksco Hollow Road, uh, and also O'Mara, Ninham Road, they're, um, looking to close out their permit and get their bond back. So for Peaksco Hollow Road, I did an inspection and they still have some cleanup they need to do. So I, I issued a, a report, so they'll have to address those issues. Uh, for Ninham Road, it looks like everything's stabilized regarding the rain garden. So, um, that'll be the next step, um, for that one. That's the O'Mar's.
Thank you. Uh, I think Bourgeois is next. Anyone here for Bourgeois? Anybody want to speak about it?
So for Bourgeois, that was a, a house on Lake Shore Drive and they, um, also want their bond back. So I went out and took a look, everything's stabilized and uh, I received photographs from the Walters, the building inspector, showing that the lot was generally stabilized in, in spring, summer, twenty nineteen. So based on, uh, Bill Walters' information and my own inspection for that one, going to, um, recommend returning of the bond. So the, the bond is typically held per code for two years. Um, the planning board has been shortening that to making sure the grass survives over a winter. So with Bill Walters' photographs and my own inspection, um, it's made for a winter. So if the planning board would like to reduce the waiting periods, uh, at this point, we don't have an objection to releasing the bond.
Anybody object?
No.
I guess, do we need to vote on this, Julie?
Yeah, you need to make a motion.
Julie, how should we phrase this?
You have to make a recommendation to the town board to release their five hundred dollar erosion control bond.
And money in their escrow remaining.
Who would like to make that motion?
I'll make the motion, Phil.
And a second?
I'll second, Dad.
All right, and Dennis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Stephen?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
Diamond?
Aye.
And I vote aye too. All right. Um, Ryder?
So, yeah. So Ryder, again, is for a single family home. Um, I went out and took, took a look, who's also took a look. They are not fully stabilized. They have not achieved full stabilization yet. Uh, they also planted the grass this spring. So if they get everything cleaned up and situated, um, you know, by the fall, I think we'll take a look out there again. And then the matter would be to hold the bond at least, you know, over the winter, make sure it comes over the winter. And then the planning board can reevaluate next, next year. Again, it's supposed to be helping years, but it's, you know, it's up to the planning board.
Just to add real quickly, um, the board requested the wetland buffer line be demarcated with boulders or fence. Um, it's not been done really. There's a few rocks here and there, but that's about it. But they're going to have to uh, do a little bit better job. Um, I'm looking concerned there's a lack of topsoil on the property. I'm realizing there's not been any rain, um, much this summer to get things to grow. I'm still thinking along Julie's lines that we need to go back in the fall and see if anything's at least growing up there.
Sounds good. Thank you. Son?
For son, we didn't get any new submissions, so they'll just be held over till next month.
The only thing I can tell the board is I did go out and have a look at the site. There are no, uh, jurisdictional wetland, wetland buffers associated with the proposed limits of disturbance, so they do not need a wetland permit. But as Julie indicated, we have nothing new that's been submitted.
Gentlemen, did you have any questions about any of those? Shall we move on? Uh, we're below the line now, I believe.
Yep.
Who is working?
I'll, I'll be doing this part. For, uh, Nunziata property, formerly Valerion, on Kentview Drive, they, um, they're mostly stabilized. They had quite a bit of required landscaping as part of their erosion control mitigation. It wasn't done. They've since gone back in and planted some trees and done the Pachysandra garden. But, um, not sure if they're the correct trees and they're also missing a wildflower garden. There's some other stabilization they need to do along the uphill side and a couple of other places.
Did you say Pachysandra garden?
Yeah, Pachysandra.
Yeah, very native. But, but I can tell you the board that they are unfortunately not the correct trees. The board spec that, so. I think, um, we have a bond and I think the board may wish to just continue to monitor the trees in hopes that the deer are well fed in that neighborhood and don't like those trees. And, um, we'll see how it goes.
Okay.
Right.
Real beautiful. Um, they are ready for chairman's signature as far as I'm concerned.
Did I sign that?
Yeah, Julie, you did sign it. We just need you to when you get a chance.
Okay, fantastic. Okay, uh, Gold Fine Rin doesn't really need to be on here anymore. Um, the, the latest update is they were required to have two driveway pull offs. So when I went out to take a look, the driveway pull offs are not located in the locations on the plan. So per my request, uh, their engineer has written a letter, emailed it, uh, evening saying that the pull offs aren't in there. So that one's, um, pretty close to have their erosion permit closed out. The lot is mostly stabilized. They'll be going out and taking a look in the next week.
Bunum Nursing, can I do that now?
Yes.
So basically, I'm now going to pull everything out that's been submitted and see if I can put together a, a sign off letter so that Phil can sign. I think all the back bills were paid. They have escrow, right, Vera?
Yeah, they do.
And Bruce and Julie, are you guys kind of done with that one for now?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay, so I put that on my calendar for next week and see if I can get a, a letter out.
Great.
Route fifty-two, nothing.
Good.
Uh, Rodney, guys, we haven't gotten anything new. We're near you. We, uh, we haven't got anything new. We need to replenish their escrow. Uh, card game. They were still waiting on a formal withdrawal. DeSanda is, uh, working through the court, through, uh, Bill Walters. And Cabrera on Horton Town Road, uh, I got an update from the architect saying he hasn't been out there in a while. He will go out, look and get back to us. So that's something. The, the last update was in, uh, January, February. So fingers crossed, we'll, we'll see some movement there.
All right.
That's it.
Very good. Questions, anybody? Comments?
Don't forget, we want to talk about what we were going to talk about before.
Well, let me close the meeting and then we'll talk about it.
Okay, okay.
Can I get a motion to close the meeting?
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
Simon, how do you vote?
Aye.
Charlie?
Aye.
Dennis?
Aye.
Stephen?
Aye.
And I vote aye. And the meeting is officially closed. Thank you, everyone.